Thank you. Thank you so much. I'd like to call to order the City Council for the City of Jonesboro, regular scheduled meeting on August 11th, called to order at 6:04. Madam Clerk, if you would please call the roll.
Mayor Dr. Danya Sardar.
Present.
Is it on?
Testing one, two.
Mayor Protem Messick.
Present.
Councilmember Don Dixon.
Present.
Councilmember Powell. Councilmember Miller.
Present.
Councilmember Lester. Councilmember Alfred Dixon. Let the record reflect that Councilmember Alfred Dixon is absent. We do have a quorum.
Thank you so much. At this time, we'll have an invocation by Pastor Trent Davis of Jonesboro, First Baptist Church of Jonesboro. Hey Pastor Davis.
All right, let's pray together. Father, thank you so much for this day. Thank you for your blessings on our community. And Lord, I pray that you will be with the council members and the mayor as things are discussed and as they lead. Lord, I pray that you would give them wisdom and clarity. And Lord, I pray that you would help everything that's done here and discussed would bring honor to you. And I pray that our community would be a light and that people would know your love for them. We ask in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
At this time, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel, we have a agenda before us. I do have one addition, and we could put that up. Item C, under New Business, Discussion of Health Benefits. Counsel, are there any other additions or deletions for the agenda other than said changes?
Mayor.
Yes.
I believe we were going to have a discussion about the forensic audit.
Chandra, we talked about that.
I believe we wanted to add the discussion regarding Plant Moran on this agenda.
Correct.
I'm not sure.
We wanted to add, that was an error. We took off the previous discussion because she, I told her to put Plant Moran on it, and she put Plant Moran in the discussion. We were talking about using it for contractual transitional services. So I asked her to take it off. And Attorney Dryer, who is not here with us today, so we could add it, but I'm not sure how much we could have a discussion without him as he is the person. He was supposed to be here, but he, there was an emergency.
I'm sorry.
I'm not sure how much she can speak to it. We just was notified earlier today that he wouldn't be able to make it.
Okay.
But let's add it, and that way we can have it for the record.
We'll see how much we can talk.
Okay.
Where should we put it?
It'll be Item D, under New Business. All right, so Counsel, we have agenda before us with the following additions under New Business. C, Discussion of Health Benefits for 2026. D, a Discussion on the Forensic Audit of Plant Moran. Any other additions, Counsel? If not, I entertain a motion to accept the agenda with said changes. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you so much. Are we going to have a PowerPoint today? Anybody in tech here today? We'll go on. So my mayor's presentation was the tax discussion. Some of you probably already have it memorized by now, but we have some different people on our public comment. So I would ask if you make public comment in regards to the tax increase that you look at one of our previous meetings at the very beginning, when we kind of give an overview of our militaried budget 101. All right, at this time, we'll move forward with our, and as he gets that, we'll circle back up if that's okay. We have a proclamation and recognition of Georgia 811 Day. Would you want to read it? Okay, I'll take it. Oh, there's somebody here to present it to. Okay. You have a copy for me to read? Got to read here.
Hi, I'm Catherine Semey. I represent Clayton County Water Authority and the Clayton County UCC, which is Utility Coordinator and Counsel. So we have a proclamation and recognition of Georgia 811 Day. Whereas thousands of times each year, the underground infrastructure in Georgia is damaged by those who do not have underground lines located prior to the building, resulting in service interruption and broad range damage and threats of public safety. Whereas in 2005, the Federal Communications Commission designated 811 to provide contractors and homeowners a simple number to contact utility operators to request the location of a underground line at the intended hit site. And whereas the Clayton County Utility Coordinator Committee, a stakeholder and organization dedicated to prevention of damage to underground utilities in Georgia, promotes the national 811 notification system in an effort to reduce these damages. And whereas damage prevention is a shared responsibility by using safe digging practices, contractors and homeowners in the city of Jonesboro can save time, money, and help keep our infrastructure safe and connected. And now therefore being proclaimed that I, Dr. Danya Sardar, Mayor of the City of Jonesboro and City Council, hereby recognize City of Jonesboro 811 Day, this is the national military coordination statewide, let us mean you all did, and call 811 first. And witness thereof, I have here to set my hand and call the seal of the City of Jonesboro, Georgia, to be affixed this 18th day of July 2025. So we will present it to you. Thank you all so much. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
The Trans Am Takeover Celebration, October 17th through 19th, 2025. Pretty exciting. Is someone here to speak on that, Mr. Simpson? Or will you share that in your economic development report?
I'll share.
Okay, no one's here for that? Okay, great. At this time, we'll have public comment. Our public comment is limited to three minutes. Speak before the mayor and council comments must be limited to matters on the agenda or over matters which the governing body has jurisdiction. We ask that you maintain decorious demeanor and refrain from personal attacks upon the mayor and council. Please state your name and your address and speak clearly into the microphone. At this time, Lance Van Dyke.
Hello, I'm Lance Van Dyke. I live in Jonesboro for 25 years, own a property in the city limits. My biggest problem thing here is we're seeing tax increases, of course, and all that, but I'm not seeing any increase in what we're getting for our money. We used to have concerts here, there used to be fairs, there used to be a lot of community involvement in this city. We go to the parks, they're empty now. The one right behind the post office is in tremendous disrepair, trees hanging over the sidewalks, dirty trash everywhere. Each of the parks, I see homeless people all the time, and I know that, you know, at one point I was homeless, I know what it's like. But, you know, we're not getting anything for the increases we're paying. That being said, I also own property in the city. The city made about five or six businesses part of their historic gateway and changed the zoning. I own a warehouse. I am no longer zoned as a warehouse. I cannot get permits for a warehouse. I cannot get permits for automobile service, which has been there for over 20 years. I cannot get permits for any type of business that is suitable. It has affected my property values. I have, of course, the code enforcement coming by and citing my tenants, rightfully so, because they don't have the proper business license, because they are no, even though they've been there for 15 years, they're no longer zoned for the businesses they're in. You know, it's dramatically affected my livelihood. I was getting ready to retire, and this really.
Do you mind giving me that address in the gateway?
251 South Main Street.
That is the in-the-gateway address that's listed here?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And I will tell you that we changed the gateway, and I'll let your time continue. We changed the gateway, gosh, it had to have been like four years ago? Can somebody confirm? And any business that was affected by that was grandfathered in. So the change was for new and incoming businesses. But if you were at one time zoned as a warehouse, we would not take that designation off of you. You would consider grandfathered in. So I would be willing, we can work with Mrs. Akuta as well as Mr. Simpson. But if there are any businesses that was zoned one way prior to the gateway, we were very deliberate, I think I was on council at that point, but those businesses were grandfathered in. So work with us. I'll make sure, Mr. Simpson, before he goes out, if you would get his direct com, and we will deal with that on case by case, but that was our understanding that when we switched it, that you were, previous zoning distinctions would remain.
Previous tenants.
Yes.
Correct.
But as new ones come in.
Yeah, okay, I have a warehouse.
But you still should have that warehouse, that should not be.
But I can't rent it to anyone else.
So you don't want to rent it for a warehouse?
Yes, I do.
Okay, well, we'll work with you on that. So again, bringing awareness to that, but my understanding when we did the gateway is that it wouldn't narrow your ability because you've been there for so long. So there are some new stipulations guided by state law, but we would definitely work with you. And Andrew, before you leave out, he will get your contact information and bring up those concerns, but go ahead.
Thank you.
Was there anything?
That was the biggest.
You did say some other things. You said concerts.
I would be willing to pay more taxes than I do now if I saw more.
I wish you had seen my presentation, Mr. Van Dyke. I think me and you would probably would be on the same page. But in regard to the concerts, we originally had $100,000 budget, and so when I became mayor, they cut it to 50%, by 50%, which means we only had $50,000. So that means typically rather than having four concerts, we had to go down to two. And so we had our two concerts, our June 10th and the 4th of July, and we'd have fireworks for both. One of the things I asked for, and anybody that's been in here knows, I've been very clear that we need to reinvest for some capital improvements for exactly, and I didn't talk to Mr. Van Dyke, y'all. So all these things that he said about the park are things I've been telling you we need about the park. And I have been preaching that. So I had a whole spiel on a value add. If you pay additional taxes, you deserve to see the impact of that difference, and that is my goal. And so I've clearly outlined those things that we could move toward. We have not had a capital improvement plan. That means like we should have a five-year plan that says this year we're going to improve this one, this one we're going to, and we have not had that. So it's been, unfortunately, things tear up, and then now we got to rush and fix it. So we're starting with Lee Street Park. You see it's closed. We're going to resurface that, but my goal is to move, and I specifically called out those parks, because they are difficult to, we do need to repair them, and families are not as eager to go there when they're not repaired. But thank you so much for your comments, and Andrew will check in with you. But I definitely don't want business to hurt, and we appreciate you being here this long. I hope you'll stay even longer. Thank you so much. David Hamrick?
Madam Clerk, council members, good evening. David Hamrick, Clayton County, District Number Three. You know, ladies and gentlemen, with elections season coming up, we hear the overused terms, accountability, transparency, honesty. What does it mean? It seems that after the elections, these terms go away. You know, when I was in retail management, I enjoyed inventory when an outside company would come in and see if I was doing my job properly. When I ran for office, I'm probably one of the only people that doesn't even know what the job paid, because I really couldn't care. But now, we have people that are elected and who are afraid of an audit, who are afraid to let the public, the taxpaying citizens, find out where their monies are going. Now, as a member of the NRA, we have audits every year. We're a multi-billion dollar organization. And I don't know how many of you remember Bob Barr, he used to be our Attorney General here in the state of Georgia. He was found to have went over his meal budget in one occasion by $60. Now, $60 is not much when we're spending over a billion dollars a year, but they made him pay it back. That's how tight we are with our money, $60. But if I was here, a member of this council or mayor, I would more than welcome an audit to prove to the people that the tax dollars are going where they should and to back up an accountability. That's just me. I would welcome an outsider to come in, an organization, and go, here, folks, here's where the money went. Now, being elected to one of the boards here on Clayton County, we have an ethics. We have to hold ourselves to a higher accountability to make sure that as we do our job, as we perform our duties, we give no questions about what we do. Just something to think about when you ask people to increase their taxes, but yet you show them nowhere where the money's going, what it's being spent on. It doesn't matter between it's $50 or $50,000. The taxpaying citizens have a right to know where the money's going. Thank you all for your time, your courtesy, and I bid everyone here a great evening. David Hamrick, District Three, Clayton County. Thank you.
If you don't mind, Mr. Hamrick, you said NRA, that's National Rifle Association?
Yes, ma'am. I'm one of the two frontline activist leaders here in the state of Georgia.
Okay, thank you so much. 147, 147 Church Street. I can't read the name. Beautiful penmanship. Oh, pastor. Hey. Okay, thank you all so much. I was like, okay, okay, I think that's it. Was anybody else here for public comment? All right, well, thank you so much. I'll now consider public comment closed.
Approval of the minutes? You want to go to that next?
No, we have no public hearing, but we have three sets of minutes to approve, and we will approve them one by one. Item A is approval of minutes for July 7, 2007. First of all, Counsel, have you all had a chance to review all the minutes? Enough to make a vote? Are there, so I entertain a motion to approve the minutes from July 7, 2025.
Motion to approve the minutes from July 7, 2025?
Any discussion, Counsel? All in favor? Any opposition? Thank you so much, Counsel. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes for July 4, 2025, regular council meeting.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposition? Thank you so much. Counsel, to consider approval of minutes from July 25, 2025, special call meeting. It was our budget meeting number one.
Motion to approve.
There a second? Any discussion? All right, Counsel, all in favor? Any opposition? Minutes are approved. Madam Clerk, O Business?
O Business, Letter A. Counsel to consider approval of the proposed revisions made to Jonesboro Youth City Government Charter, Article Two, Section 33-2, to ensure consistency throughout the document.
The only question I had, and if we want to table this, because Councilman Alfred Dixon is not here, on Section C, he's asking that the quorum, that four members shall constitute a quorum, and I, and I think actually in reality, it would require five, and I would want to remain at what we consider a quorum. So that was my only concern. I'll entertain a motion actually to table this because I can't speak to anything beyond that. Yes? Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
New Business, Letter A. Counsel to consider appro- New Business, Letter A. Council to consider approval of a fee waiver submitted by Tabernacle of Praise Church International, Jonesboro location, for use of Lee Street Park on Saturday, October twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five, in support of their fall festival event.
Somebody here from Tabernacle of Praise Church International want to come forward? Um, they presented a application and requested a fee waiver, and I asked them to add it to the agenda. I think you, we have an application in here. There's no alcohol, um, I think they do all the cleanup, and I think they're providing all of the post-certified securities. Is that correct? Okay. Do y'all have any questions for representative? Is there a motion for this matter?
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the waiver for Tabernacle of Praise. The date is stated October twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five.
Correct. Any discussion, council?
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I have one quick question. Will this be open to the public?
Absolutely. It's for the public. And then I ask, there's no sponsorship charges or anything like that, so there's no, there's no revenue? No. Um, all in favor? In, oh, no, I'm sorry. Was there any other discussion? I don't think that was it. Okay, that's fine. All in favor? Any opposed? All right. Thank you so much. We'll get back with you just for logistics and probably have a logistical meeting in the month of October. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Letter B. Council to discuss proposed street closure submitted by Bo Durbin for the Trans Am Takeover Georgia on October seventeenth through the nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
And I'll just briefly go over this, and we can approve the street closure, and then when, um, economic development, downtown development gives this report, he can give details. They reached out to us for the anniversary, and so their, their whole weekend, they're coming from, they'll be in Atlanta on the seventeenth, and we have an agenda for the eighteenth. Is that correct, uh, uh, Andrew? Where they want to block the streets, and we look like it's going to probably be blocked from a depot to the Methodist Church at the end of Arts Clayton. And so they'll have the original Smokey and the Bandit car, um, and some other guests, and of course, we're invited, and it is open to the public. So I would entertain a motion to accept the road closures. Um, Chief of Police will work closely with their contacts and make sure safety is ins- ensured. Yes? Any further discussion, council? All in favor? Any opposition? Thank you so much. At this time, we met with our health insurance brokers. Councilors, I pass this out, know that they have, it has personal staff name on there, so I'll probably ask for the items back.
Mayor, can I read it into the record?
Read what into the record?
Um, item C.
Yes.
Council to discuss, um, health benefits.
So today, um, me, Ms. Worthington, as well as, um, Ms. Kennedy met, did our yearly check-in, um, some things just to, hold on one second. Some things to just highlight from our meeting. Um, they're looking at a ten percent rate, you know, ten percent possible, a ten percent, ten percent increase. So when you look at the, um, budget today, we've already went in and reflected that ten per, possible ten percent increase. And that's just what the market is trending. Also, if you all recall, at an earlier date, council had concerns that the city was paying a portion of, we pay a hundred percent for the employees' health benefits. But there was some concerns raised by fellow council members that we pay a portion of employee spouse policies, employee children policies, and employee family policies. So, in an effort to be transparent, um, I had, I'm sharing with you all what we're paying. That first sheet that I gave you with names on it will tell you those individuals that are using the employee children, employee spouse, and it looks like Ms. Worthington, no one is using employee family. Okay. So we need to make a decision as we go in, and if there's additional information, I wanted to start this conversation earlier. If there is a certain percentage that we want to pay for employee spouse, employee children, and employee family. At this particular time, we have, uh, twenty-seven, nine, we have thirty-three individuals covered in the policy, and we have six, we have nine staff that use a policy other than employee only. So this information is in front of you all. We can, I'll bring it back for a vote in September. I just wanted to give you that information and have a discussion with you all to see. Remember, we discussed perhaps the city contributing fifty percent, um, for employee spouse, employee children, employee family, rather than just completely removing that, because it would have a significant financial impact on our employees to actually utilize it. Any thoughts or anything, anybody? So my goal is, are you all opposed to looking at numbers for fifty percent? Um, if you look at that first sheet, you would see what it would end up being. Yes. No, no, so we're gonna, but if you just get, employees will still be covered at a hundred percent. But there was questions about, we were covering such a significant a part of employee and spouse, employee, children, employee family coverages. Um, if you look over where it says current employee contribution. So for example, on employee A, the current premium for a employee plus child, an employee plus child and plus children, so it doesn't matter. It's an employee for one child or five children. So then total premium is thirteen hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirty-two cent. We pay twelve hundred and forty-nine dollars of that, um, and then the employee is responsible for paying a hundred and sixteen dollars. Whereas if it was just the employee, they would only pay a hundred, I mean, they, they wouldn't pay anything, but they pay additional a hundred and sixteen to cover their children. Um, if you look for those that are covering them, covering themselves, plus their spouse, but with no children, um, they pay a current employee portion of a hundred and forty-two. But that is with us paying at a rate of about seventy to seventy-one, seventy-nine percent in some cases, and seventy-one percent. In the case of employee plus spouse, the city is covering seventy-one percent of that share. Employees paying twenty-eight. For employee plus children, we're paying seventy-nine, and they're paying roughly about twenty. So I was proposing, well, initially, I would like for it to stay the same, but I was proposing that we not require them to completely pay for it, but reduce, um, our share from seventy-one and seventy-nine to fifty percent. January. And also, it's important to know, um, we only have one policy. We have Cigna, and we have two levels of Cigna, and we're induced. So it's not like they have a cafeteria of selections that they can base, they basically only have two, and we're considering a third one up under Cigna, a high deductible. So council, I want to go back and get some numbers, would you all be okay with fifty percent? Are y'all okay allowing it to remain with the same percentage that we're doing now for another year?
If I may?
Yes.
I'm okay with it staying the same, um, for another year until we can figure out a budget that allows us to give them more than a two percent raise if we're going to ask them to pay upwards of six hundred, five to six hundred dollars additional. I think healthcare is important, and we're talking about people's children and their families, and so, um, as for Councilman Miller, I'm fine with it staying the same.
Counsel, any other comments? If that's the case, I can entertain a motion to continue the percentage of cover, the, the pin, percentage of share that we're providing, and then they can build from there. Any discussion? All right, well, thank you. Well, Ms. Worthington, that's easy. So we'll, the percentage will be remaining the same, and I'll update you once we get that new premium. Thank you so much. If you will pass those things out, they have employees' names on it, please. You want to read in the record, item D?
Yes, item D. Um, discussion regarding Plant Moran forensic audit.
Discussion. Yes?
We had, we had previously had a discussion. We had, we had previously had a discussion about the need to allow Mr. Dryer to approve an increase in what Plant Moran, in the, um, amount that they needed to move forward with the audit, and he just needed us to do that in a public meeting officially so that he could do that. I realize he's not here tonight. Is, are, are you familiar with this? With this contract and of what I'm speaking with?
Do you have, I think before we vote on it, we all need to have access to that contract, because I, my understanding was that he was going back to talk to them to get some clarity, and he had highlighted some things which would have reduced the additional amount that they were asking for.
Okay. Since your attorney of record this, this evening?
Yeah, absolutely. Zanelli Gavani on behalf of the Dray firm. There may be some questions that I can answer for you with regards to Plant Moran, um, and the increased amount that was requested. Um, the previous amount that was discussed is still the same, even after following up on some of the questions that came up last week. Um, and I can provide maybe a quick answer about those questions, but the request for the additional thirty K approval is still what they are asking.
No, I don't think so. I, I mean, I'm not disputing you, but there were some things in there that was, and let me just be clear for everyone. This is not me trying to avoid a forensic audit. This is me not trying to spend an extra red cent on redundant information. I think there was a concern in there about something very specific, and what I mentioned was, we don't need to pay them for that. So there was a question, if I'm correct, they were charging us extra money to figure out about health benefits. So we spoke with them today, the health benefits people, and they said they can provide an audit for us to share with them. Um, I also explained that if the concern was about the amount that was paid for my health benefits, we don't need a forensic audit to do that. I can tabulate that for you right now. And so I think that was my concern, rather than paying them ten or fifteen thousand dollars for information that we can get directly from our health benefits plan, or information that we can go straight to the finance department and get and say, Mayor Sardar's premium was paid at this rate for a number of months. So that was my concern, just wanting to save, because that, the four or five things that they were asking for, it wasn't, um, the pricing wasn't, you know, specified, like, ten thousand for this and twenty thousand for that. So we've already paid them four thousand, forty thousand dollars, you all, to basically do a discovery. And what they've come out with could have easily just been stated by the council. So we've already paid forty thousand for them to interview you all, for you all to tell them what y'all think is wrong. So, no investigation has taken place at this particular point. All we have now is the things that the council has shared with them to investigate, which the council could have shared on record, and that would have saved us forty thousand. Now they're asking for thirty more thousand dollars, which doesn't include the sixty-five thousand dollars beyond that, to actually do the work. So I am all for getting this done, but by the same point, I don't, I don't want to do it at the expense, like I said, we've already spent forty thousand, and what they're looking into was based on interviews with council, which they could have just verbalized public, and we could have. So what, what they did first was, we paid them to define the scope of work. So we paid them to talk to us to figure out what we're looking for, and it cost forty thousand dollars to do that. And what they found that, what they, what we want to look at is reasonable things, you know, nothing glaring, nothing that I would object to. I'm just objecting to the fact that we just, and if you've been in any of the council meetings, I clearly asked repeatedly, let's clarify the allegations to drive this forensic, so that we can give those, give them the allegations, and then they could immediately be in doing the work. So the forty thousand dollars that we spent for them to discover, any of y'all in sales? So whenever you're in sales, you have a period of discovery. So we just spent forty thousand dollars on discovery. And so, I want to be cautious moving forward with additional thirty thousand, because I feel like it's really unfair to the taxpayers' dollars that council would just not simply state what they're concerned about. It's really easy to state. We're concerned about that perhaps the mayor's premiums were paid when it was not authorized, and I've admitted to that, and we have an ethics committee in place, and they can file an ethics complaint for that. I think there was some concerns about people that were no longer working for us, still getting their benefits paid. Well, that's really easy to look at. We don't have, contrary to what the news may say, we don't have that much turnover. There are twelve employees. We can easily look at when they were terminated or discharged, and whether they accepted Cobra or not, and we haven't had anyone have Cobra. There was concerns about payment for rental at the park. Well, we can provide that information. That's really easy. So my concern is that we spent forty thousand dollars, and they have really done no work other than interview you all. I guess y'all felt more comfortable telling the accountants rather than telling the public what you were really concerned about.
Yarn, if I may?
Mm-hmm.
The information that I have is not specific to that, those issues related to health benefits. Um, and so, uh, it's ti- it's with regards to the scope, the time, the number of years, and things of that nature.
Well, the last thing that he sent us had those things, so whereas, it clearly said thirty thousand dollars, and it has some red things highlighted that we needed to clarify.
Yes, I understand.
So I don't think anyone up here can tell us what the additional thirty thousand dollars is for. Can you, Mayor Protem?
He had, he was specifically talking about diving deeper into the benefits. Um, I think that was something that he had mentioned at that time.
So.
I just want to, respectfully, I would just, understanding the nature of the concerns and that not being the most updated information I have, I would then respectfully ask to, um, wait to have this conversation until he can be involved with it.
And we're going to have a special call meeting to, so to Mayor's, Mayor Protem's point, what we last saw indicated a deep dive into the insurance. Well, y'all, there ain't so much you can dive into insurance. We can pull a list of employees, look at their termination date, look at when they're, because health benefits last for thirty days typically, sometimes, or to the end of the month, depending. Like, we don't have to pay a forensic audit, y'all, for that. That, to me, that's wasting taxpayers' money. What else was it, on Mayor Protem for the thirty thousand dollars?
Uh, I just, I recall that, that our attorney said he needed to speak with us concerning this. He was going to send us information concerning this, and that it needed to be voted on.
And that's what I was saying. We don't have the information to vote, so why would we vote on something, and we don't, we're going, we're going to vote to give them thirty thousand dollars more, but no one here can speak to what the thirty thousand dollars is. And I'm not going to pay any, I don't think we should pay anybody thirty thousand dollars to, to tell us who was insured at a certain point and who wasn't insured. Like, I mean, y'all can do open records requests for that, and I can give you that and just, um, take the people's names off. So, yeah, but again, we, I want to just be clear. We don't know what the thirty thousand dollars is, and if any council member can tell us other than a deeper dive into insurance, which should not cause us thirty thousand dollars, I don't feel comfortable taking, entertaining a vote for that at this particular time. Yes?
I'd like to make a motion to table this, since Attorney Dryer is not present, to speak fully into, um, what the additional funds are for. To the public's point, I don't think that it will, since we already approved the additional sixty-five thousand dollars for them to do the work, hopefully this won't hinder them going ahead and doing other things, and then we can circle back to this healthcare discussion.
Any further discussion, council? All in favor? Any opposition? All right. Attorney, can you modify, uh, can you modify agenda mid-agenda? I forgot something. You can't, council, two things I would like to give a courtesy, since Councilman Dixon came in to hear, we tabled your matter. Um, would you like us to continue to keep it tabled, or? Do you mind? Okay, perfect. So, how do, how do we do that? I want to bring that back up, and then also I forgot to put in the budget discussion, but we need, we were going to add, um, a finance report, and so I could add it there.
If there could be a motion, y'all could vote and go right back to it.
Counsel, I would entertain a motion that we go back into the agenda to hear the, um, old business item A, and then also immediately after that, add an item B for budget discussion and finance report.
Mayor?
Yes?
I'll go with the, uh, bringing back up old business, section A, uh, from being tabled to a discussion.
Y'all don't want to talk about the budget? No, I, well, she was supposed, we were supposed to add a finance report, since we have a finance director. So can we add both of those items?
Fine with me.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposition? All right. Councilman Dixon, you want to read for the record, item A on the old business?
I didn't get to second that motion.
Councilman Lester made it. Councilman Dixon seconded it.
Old Business, Letter A. Council to consider approval of the proposed revisions made to Jonesboro Youth City Government Charter, Article Two, Section Thirty-three dash two, to ensure consistency throughout the document.
Article two, section thirty-three dash two, to ensure consistency throughout the document.
Yeah, so Mayor and counsel, this, um, this agenda item just refers to, um, the Jonesboro Youth City Government Charter. And we're looking to just modify it to provide consistency and make a change in the amount of members that it takes to do a quorum. Normally in the past, um, it has been five, and I believe we're here to change it to four. As far as the consistency of the charter, it's referenced as the Jonesboro Youth, as the Jonesboro Youth Council. And we'd just like to make a simple change to make it reflect Jonesboro Youth City Government.
Councilman Dixon, my question, how, so you have, when you establishing a quorum, are you establishing off of seven members similar to us? Or do you include your city manager, director of communications, director of finance, and committee members? When you, when you're doing quorum, are you just establishing among council and mayor?
Yes.
And so I would, I, I would add the seven. Okay, so then, okay, I thought you were adding like the Mayor Protem. So the only people that can constitute a quorum would be the count of the mayor and the six council members.
Correct.
So we're basing quorum on those. Okay, so then four would be fine. Counsel, I'll entertain a mo, a motion for said changes to the, um, youth, Jonesboro Youth City Government Charter.
Motion to approve the revisions made to the Jonesboro Youth City Government Charter.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you so much, counsel.
Thank you.
We had some time to know, um, to, 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 do we have the budget papers? So we went in and added the things that you all have highlighted in regard to the additions. I think mainly most of those were, the additions were across Public Works and Public Safety. I did go back in, counsel, we originally had taken out all travel. I went back in, in two thousand twenty-five, we had an approved budget of two thousand five hundred. I did go back in and add one thousand twelve hundred and fifty. There is a possibility we may have new council members, and as you know, the, um, new council trainings require travel. I would like for our new council members to also be able to go to GMA with their colleagues, so I reduced that to half. We also removed from our two thousand twenty-five budget, the recommendation for council was to remove our special initiatives at a thousand dollars. And so our special initiative is what each of us, so each of us get a thousand dollars to do things for the community. Mayor, I mean, Mayor Protem uses, I think typically uses hers, sometimes she does donations to Jonesboro High School, but she also uses it for her, I think your Christmas event, don't you?
I do have a Christmas event.
Yep, Christmas event, for homeless students. Alfred just kind of, it gets spent, but across the community. Councilwoman Miller uses hers for her Christmas. I typically use mine for the back-to-school or Thanksgiving dinner. So it's only a thousand dollars, so council had recommended that we move that, and after thinking about it, we're here to serve. And although maybe we can't have a thousand dollars this year, I felt that it would be reasonable to have five hundred, so I added five hundred back to the budget. Those two totals, I think was probably ten thousand dollars added back to the budget, but I thought they were, it was very important. Also, when I first became mayor, we had a hundred thousand dollars for events, and then they cut it to fifty thousand. And so this year, they wanted to remove those concerts, but Mr. Van Dyke, after hearing you and hearing from other people, our concert series is, is a way for community to gather. And we do, and the twenty-five thousand dollars doesn't cover two concerts. Last year, we raised about forty-five thousand dollars in sponsorships. And both of our concerts were well-attended by all members of the community. And it's just an opportunity for community to go together. So counsel, I've added twenty-five thousand, um, back to the budget. Was it twenty-five thousand? I wanted to add the fifty, but we added the twenty-five, and we'll just work hard. So those are the additions based on you all's feedback that I took back in, rather than eliminate those items, I just cut them in half. But based on that, at eleven meal rate, we were able to add, I think, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to Public Works for much-needed Public Works vehicles, as well as some, not a huge amount for park repair, but some. And then also, there was a hundred thousand added to the chief of police. That brings us to a contingency of about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, a hundred and seventy-one? Come on, I'm sorry. This is Mrs. Kennedy, she's our finance director, she's been with us for a week, and when I say she has... I'm sorry, the money was not to the chief of police, it was to Public Safety, excuse me.
Okay.
He was like, ah, ah, don't get him in trouble, yes. Yeah, no.
No, I was just saying, we also had to add the ten percent increase that we came up with, with the insurance company today.
And we added that. So with that being said, that is the new budget that is presented, did we pass it? That is presented before you all. Again, I'm not asking for you all to approve the budget, but as we go into our budget discussions, well, if we need to have anymore. But as we go into our village discussions, I wanted you, so that's based on everything that you all asked for. So I put back in thirty-two thousand, thirty-seven thousand, and I think you all collectively agreed to add in three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So do y'all have any comments or anything on that? Yes.
I wasn't at.
I know.
The one meeting, I'm at every other meeting, I wasn't at one meeting, and all these things are, have been changed. I just want the record to reflect that I did not agree with cutting the initiative funds, that makes absolutely no sense. We're here to serve the people. It's a thousand dollars. I think the people who don't particularly care to use it should willingly give it up, that's fine. I think it's unfair for the people and the people that we serve with the money, the people that are expecting these annual events, to cut them for the small amount that it will save on the grand scheme of things, of this million, this however million-dollar budget. And so I think that that's insane. I think we are cutting the legs of the community and asking, and still asking them to pay more taxes, which is exactly what he was talking about. And so we're cutting the concert series again, cutting our initiative funds. I don't even care about travel, except for the fact that I get to go and learn things to make me a better council member, but I can figure that out, or pay that on my own dime, even though I still think that that's cutting the community, because we're not being the best that we can be, because we're not able to go and learn. But the initiative funds, I do not agree with you, I'll do what you want. The concert funds, I do not agree with you, I'll do what you want, but I want the record to stay, I was not at that meeting, I do not agree with that. I think we should be doing more to serve the community, not taking things away and asking them to pay more money.
Thank you, Councilwoman Miller. And also, it isn't, so just for frame of reference, most counties, I mean, most councils have like four or five thousand dollars in initiatives. This is our way to actually personally go serve the community, um, without using our funds. So, um, some council members don't use it, they just, some of them at some point rolled it over to their travel. But the whole idea, and I had wanted to create a resolution to where it was only used for a community, and be one of the few line items that we could not transfer. So definitely, any other thoughts on, on returning the special initiative back to a thousand dollars, counsel? Yes? Was somebody down here? No.
No, just want to say I completely agree with Councilwoman Miller. Those funds are used to enhance our experiences as council members, um, and our ability to serve the community, so I appreciate that provision.
And I will say, each of us that use the thousand dollars, we use more than that. We, we, we work with local businesses, my back-to-school event usually runs about six thousand dollars, so we raise that through sponsorships. I know, um, Councilwoman Miller, for her Christmas event, we pool into the community, we actually thinking about having a Christmas in July event, a Christmas in September event, so that people can donate their toys in September, and not when they're spending so much money in December, and we can go ahead and get the collection. And I know Councilman Dixon, Dixon, it goes without saying, and as well as Mayor Protem. Mayor Protem, what are your thoughts on increasing our special initiatives back to a thousand dollars?
I think it's.
Cause that.
If the budget will allow it.
So that's a, that would be.
Well, that was one of the big discussions we had at the board meeting, was trying to find things that we could cut to offset some of the expenses that are going to be absolutely necessary for so many of the services that we have to provide. So, yes, you're right, many, many of us, I know Ms. Miller and Mr. Dixon are very good at getting the community together to raise an effort to get.
And the mayor.
The events done, and, and just, and yourself, Mayor.
Okay.
As well, as well as what I do. So, um, and I know others donate their initiatives, a lot of their time, they're donating their initiatives toward those.
Not their time, just their money.
I'm sorry?
Not their time, just their money.
But, no.
I mean, we're gonna be, gentleman just said he wants transparency. I mean, they can talk about their initiatives that they do in the community. Would y'all like the gentleman to talk about it? I just want to be transparent, talk about the initiatives y'all do with your thousand dollars. No comment? Okay. So those that don't want it are those that don't use it?
I split it between Mayor Protem and.
I know, but the whole, but the whole idea of the initiative is for you to get out in the community, and for you to do something, and you to engage. I mean, it's okay to just pass it off or use it to your travel, but it was created for a vehicle for us to interact with the community. So it's easy to split the check. Y'all never give it to me, but that's fine. But that's what it was for, um, for us to actually get out there and use it and interact. But as Councilman Don Dixon said, he just splits it in half and give it. So counsel, would y'all be opposed to bringing it back to a thousand dollars? That would be thirty-five hundred dollars, and that's not much in the whole, in the, in the scope of things. You say what, Albert, you want some more? Let's, let's take it back for, um... So you want to go back to a thousand dollars? So, so I wanted to bring, I really wanted to bring it, so what happens when, when they, I wanted to kind of come to a compromise, and so you all took it out completely, so I put it back at five hundred. I don't know how much you can do for five hundred, and so.
I want to raise it to a thousand, is that what you said?
Yes, sir.
I got the problem with that.
Thank you. All right. So I don't think, other than that, I don't think anything else was changed, other than I feel like it's only fair that we roll the travel back at least half of it, because there's a possibility that we might have new council members, I don't know, and they're required during their first year, and those trainings are not virtual. They're not virtual, are they? They're not virtual, and the GMA. Thank you, counsel. Any other changes or modifications to the, um, budget that we can work on, or any questions that you have? Um, do y'all want to ask any questions about the Georgia fund balance? I think Ms. Kennedy has played detective enough to kind of get us to where we are to kind of help answer that mystery.
Well, what, what it was is that we were, the council was thinking that the balance in that account should have been somewhere close to five million dollars. And actually, what turned out to be, and it was like two point, two point eight million so far. And so what I did was, today I went back and I looked at the audit from two thousand twenty-two. And so the amount that was in the general fund at two thousand twenty-two, so I was thinking maybe this is where that five million dollars came from. The, um, the amount in the general fund at the end of two thousand twenty-two, according to the audit, was five million, two hundred, two hundred and seventy-one dollars, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars. And out of that particular amount, only eight hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars was for the Georgia One Fund. And so that's why we're at the position where it now, where it's two point eight million, and not the five million that you were thinking. So I'm thinking that's how the number got to everybody thinking it was five million, instead of the two point eight that we're actually at.
And we have all the deposits, not deposits, we have.
I got all of them.
She has all of the statements, we opened up this account in two thousand eighteen with seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars, and that was the fuel tax, Mayor Protem, that you were referencing. And so, um, we, so you can see all the withdrawals that were made there. So everything that's in the Georgia Fund One is in the Georgia Fund One, and nothing has been taken out. Yes.
Yeah, I, I have spoken with, is this our? Um, I'm sorry, I have spoken with, um, Ms. Karen at our last budget meeting, about doing some research on our fund balance, not Georgia One, but our overall fund balance.
Okay.
Which, and we, we had a good conversation about what that would incur, because it's not just funds in the bank of assets, and things of that nature, and she was going to get me a report on that.
Okay, well, she didn't mention it to me, so.
Right now, uh, we can get that, I'll have, we have to tell her to shift that right now, she's focusing on pool cash to get ready for the audit. So, uh, I know Ms. Kennedy is well aware of the actual fund balance, but you all kept saying, for the record, we got five million dollars in the Georgia Fund One account, like y'all just kept saying it, Georgia Fund One, Georgia Fund Four One. And so when we finally got in, it is not five million dollars in the Georgia Fund One, it is two point seven million dollars in there. And you all have all of this, did you just give them all the statements?
I gave them all the statements.
You have all the statements from two thousand eighteen, when the, um, when it was open with that seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollar jet fuel tax. Ideally, at the end of every year when we have our audit, we do want to roll additional funds back there, um, for what we don't think we need in our general fund. But hopefully, we'll get to that point. Any questions on, I want to make sure we're clear on this Georgia Fund One, any questions on the Georgia Fund One? Okay, so we're all good?
And I also provided, uh, balances for the current balances that are in the bank of the account as of June thirtieth, because, I mean, the one for the general fund is, uh, seven thirty-one, but I guess, uh, Candice didn't understand me, when I wanted the other ones for seven thirty-one too. So the other accounts show the balance as of six thirty. And so then all of that is, that's your second page, and then all of these statements are for Georgia Fund One. And I also wanted to talk about us getting started with our, with the audit for two thousand twenty-three. I've spoken to, um, Tab and Tab, it's a CPA firm in downtown Atlanta, it's a husband and wife team. And right now, they are in a position to come in and start the audit for two thousand twenty-three. I talked to them today, they can start the audit for two thousand twenty-three, and hopefully we can get that finished by the end of the year, so that we can present that to you guys. And I put some information in the back about, uh, Tab and Tab, the CPA firm, and they will send over a quote by the end of, uh, end of the week, so that we can get that to you guys, to see if that is something that you guys want to, uh, an audit firm that you might want to work with.
Mayor.
Yes.
Is that something we need to post, like our RFP?
You don't have, because it's professional services, we're not required to post, I just asked Mrs. Kennedy, um, I'm, I'm not familiar with Tab and Tab, she gave me the information today. I asked Ms. Kennedy and Mrs. Slaton, is there a firm that you are, you all are familiar with? The biggest thing right now is that because so many other cities, their fiscal year ends on July first, is that right? Yeah, July first. We want to find somebody that's not going to hold us for two or three months, so I told her to check with someone that had immediate availability, um, so that they can get it in and get it started. Uh, we are going to provide for them the RFP, so they'll know everything that's included, and they can base their price on it.
But they are, they are available to start as soon as we need them, because they just told me they finished up with doing East Point, so they are available to do it. And we could, you know, get, possibly get, we can get it done by the end of the year for two thousand twenty-three, and then we'd automatically jump into two thousand twenty-four.
And then we'll be caught up, and then in July, we can do two thousand twenty-five. So it's a twelve-month plan to get us caught up on all of our audits.
And it may not take that long either. It's just that I've got to go into two thousand twenty-three, look at where we're at, make sure everything is clean before we just hand it to them. I don't like to just hand it to them without making sure that it's clean, so I'm just going through two thousand twenty-three, start going through two thousand twenty-three and make sure it's clean, helping Karen to clean up two thousand twenty-four right now, so.
Counsel, any further direction in the audit? Our budget, um, we have a budget line item of forty thousand dollars for that?
I think it's forty-five.
Forty-five thousand.
Might be forty-five.
Are you all still okay with that amount? Is there any additional information that you would want from this provider? If they are, if they are able to accommodate us? We can call East Point and get a reference, and anyone else?
Yeah.
Yes.
I would, yeah, I would like a, I would like a estimate.
Oh, yeah, we just started talking about it today, yes.
I just called them today, and as soon as the mayor gets.
I'm trying to find the RFP.
Then we'll, we'll shoot that to them, and they will give us a quote.
Okay.
Yeah. Ms. Chantrell, would you happen to have a copy of the RFP, who, because I went online and it wasn't posted? So we will, if you would help her to find it, that, I, quickly today, I was trying to find it, and it was not posted. So we will get them that RFP, and then we'll get a quote.
The audit is in here at forty-five thousand.
It is for forty-five thousand, okay. So with the possibility of being able to move forward, do you all want to wait until September before we make a motion? To approve the audit firm, to allow, um, I'm sorry, to allow Ms. Kennedy and Ed Walls to select the audit firm not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars? Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Can y'all say it, cause I forgot? I'll entertain a motion to allow us to move forward with professional services by audit firms selected by Ms. Kennedy, along with any assistance from, um, Ed Walls, not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars, and to begin immediately.
Second in motion.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you so much, counsel. At this time, we have a few reports. Mr. Simpson, would you like to give our downtown Main Street report? Thank you so much, Ms. Kennedy, she's been here a week. She's been here a week and I asked her this morning, it could, we should be prepared for a financial report and thank you, I appreciate you. Um, and then after that, we'll have an economic development report from Fay Pacuta.
So does anyone have any questions about my downtown development report? I don't have any. Okay, so I would like to thank Public Works, Police Department, vendors, performers, especially those who came to both of our concerts. Um, the Juneteenth was a great success. The, um, public loved the fly past on that. And the independent celebration, I thought, was really good too. I just want to flag this, it's not in my report, um, but I was at my Leadership Clayton class last week. They are flagging and they are saying they want cities to get behind the FIFA World Cup, which is coming to Atlanta in twenty-twenty-six. We also have the America Two-Fifty. Every meeting I'm now going to, I'm also seeing on social media, those are the two major things. Um, so if we are going to be able to have some money, um, I think those, those would be the two things that I would go for. Again, it's counsel's pleasure. Um, but America Two-F, Two-Fifty, uh, Georgia, Governor Kemp's kicking it off at the, um, Perry Fair in October. And that will run all the way through, obviously, until July fourth, twenty-twenty-six. Um, I want to talk about, when we're talking about anniversaries, um, the Smokey and the Bandit proposal. For those that were here in twenty-seventeen, you all know that it celebrated the fortieth anniversary. Sadly, since that time, a number of the cast members have passed on. And the fiftieth could well be the last one for original cast members. They may not do it after the fiftieth. Um, so this year, we're having a dry run for the fiftieth, um, you know, work out the kinks and the issues so we can have a fabulous fiftieth anniversary event in twenty-twenty-seven. Um, it's over three days. It will start off at the Terror Theater in Atlanta and a red carpet premiere. Uh, a hundred to two hundred Trans Ams and replica movie vehicles are scheduled for downtown Jonesboro on October the eighteenth. I have been in contact with the Methodist Church and I've been in contact with, uh, First Baptist and Arts Clayton. And we are all going to work together to make sure this is a spectacular success. As I said, it's a three-day event. Um, our event is on Saturday. Hundred to two hundred Trans Ams and replica cars. We'll be asking local vendors and food trucks with priority for Jonesboro-based businesses. I know this is something that counselors ask for, that I ask food trucks in Jonesboro who are based first before I go out and ask others, and that's what I'm continuing to do with direction from counsel. Um, we'll also be doing filming location tours highlighting Jonesboro's movie heritage. I actually conducted a familiarization visit for a film company last week. I'd like to thank the mayor and LTI, um, for helping with that and Public Works for introducing me to the old police department. Um, Arts Clayton will also be on board. There will be a live performance, um, performing Jerry Reed's music from the film. There'd also be family-friendly activities and fan meet and greets. Um, this should bring thousands of visitors to downtown Jonesboro. And then on Sunday, um, it ends up in Stone Mountain. But the big day will be Saturday, October the eighteenth. I do hope that mayor and counsel, um, will be able to, uh, appear on that day. Does anybody have any questions?
Um, it's, thank you. Uh, I just have a few questions about eateries downtown, um, Big Tree Pizza Shop. It was just another one, I can't remember. I think they were trying to go a little further by the white building in the gas station. Uh, but just the eateries downtown, do we have any word on when any of them might be open?
I'm not sure about the time scale for the Wells Fargo building. That may be open by this time. The other ones that you're...
When is their hearing? I saw the sign out there, when is their hearing? It's next month, okay, so it won't be open before September, could they have a hearing?
So depending on how it goes, it may be open in October. I don't know. Um, to your point, and I referenced this, um, and for people who are at home and do not know this, who are in the audience, you can't just open a restaurant. You have to get a grease trap. Then Clayton County Public Health Department, doing their due diligence, will say you need to get a dumpster. You can share that dumpster, but you will need one. We are currently looking at pouring a concrete pad and then getting a fence put around that so we can put a dumpster in. Because our ordinance clearly says that all dumpsters must be fenced in. If we can get that next month. So I've been tasked by the DDA to get three quotes for fencing and three quotes for the concrete pad. And then once I will report that back to DDA and then DDA will vote on whatever quote they want. And then we can go ahead and get the fence and the concrete pad done.
Can we talk again about, I want to revisit the location of that and it's more than just a fence. It's like a brick casing and then the gate in the front. So I don't want you all to think it's just like a, similar to what we have here, but a little bit more decorative. Is that right?
You can or we can copy what Nuvo has.
Okay, we kind of want it.
But we, it will be discussed at the next DDA meeting, which the mayor is on the board.
And I would encourage you all to join us.
For that, yes, because we're desperately trying to get that in. And that's really, to your point, what's holding it up. Um, the restaurants can't move forward until the dumpsters go in.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Mr. Simpson.
Good evening, mayor, council and citizens of the community. Um, I stand before you to give you the community development slash, um, economic development report. So on the operations and it, excuse me, on the administration and operations, um, the Historic Preservation Commission did not meet in July. Um, and since we have advertised, um, needing members to serve on this particular council, um, we currently have four vacancies. Um, currently we have about three members and we need at least four for a quorum. So we wouldn't be able to move anything forward at this time. But as of today, um, we have received some applications, so I just have to go through, vet them, ensure that they are actually City of Jonesboro residents. And then, um, we'll get it moving forward. Um, we've also processed and responded to zoning verification requests. Um, these requests are required before applicants can get their business license. So it's been quite a few of those coming in. Um, and also it's been internal coordination and planning meetings related to zoning, housing and development. So I am new to the City of Jonesboro, so I've been introducing myself, um, not only to outside agencies, but internal as well because we all have to work together. Um, under community engagement and events, um, I supported a number of events, not only with the City of Jonesboro, but with our neighbors as well. So we had our Independence Day celebration on July third. Um, Clayton County had their groundbreaking for their amphitheater on July eighth. Um, I, along with mayor, attended the Third Annual Economic Development Brunch, which was on July twenty-fourth. And we also attended the Air Trappolis Ribbon Cutting on July thirtieth. Um, under upcoming events, which have since passed, Ray's Place had their official ribbon cutting. And we also were able to coordinate the cottages on Von site visit, um, which I think went really well. We got a lot of great pictures, so for those that were able to attend, thank you. Under economic development, again, Micro Life Institute, that is the particular organization that is, um, that we're part and went for the cottage development. And we also, um, we've been working with the Southern Cities Economic Inclusion Grant. Um, we have secured our consultant for this project and we're working on our, step one of our procurement process. Under planning and zoning, um, I had two pre-application meetings as well as the two zoning reports. Um, when it comes to pre-application meetings, I do like to meet with applicants before they submit, um, just to ensure they fully understand the process and just answer any questions they may have. And, um, I have some upcoming training and professional development classes. And at this time, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Counsel, any questions? Yes?
Uh, thank you, thank you for everything. Uh, could you share the, um, the vacancies on the boards again, on which boards?
So we're looking for members to serve on Historic Preservation Commission, I believe. Um, the Downtown Development Authority as well, oh, no, I'm sorry, that's Andrews. I believe it's one more, I'll have to double check. It's not on my report.
Okay, got you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. At this time, we'll entertain reports from city council members. Councilman Power, do you have a report this evening?
No, ma'am.
Councilman, council, Mayor Pro Tim?
I know, Mayor, thank you.
Councilman Dee Dixon? Councilwoman Asia Miller?
Just like to say thank you to all of our staff, um, all of our departments, you all are amazing. We appreciate you. Uh, the ones that just started with us and hit the ground running, you guys are amazing. We really appreciate it. Um, thank you to the people who are coming, who've been coming to the meetings. I see that there are more and more, our chairs are filling up and so I'm happy about that. We appreciate your input, we need it. Um, I think it helps keep us in the middle of the road. So thank you guys so much for being here. Please feel free to come and sign up for public comment every time. We always want to hear from you. So thank you again for being here, um, and that's it. You all have a safe, uh, drive home and a good evening.
Councilman Lester?
Um, Andrew, we'll thank our employees for all that they do, their hard work, their diligence, putting up with us. And, um, just, again, thank you all for coming.
Councilman? Councilman Alfred Dixon?
I just want to, uh, echo, definitely echo those sentiments. Uh, definitely thank each and every one of you all for continuing to show up, um, whether it's here in person or, um, online. Definitely keep showing up, we appreciate you all. Um, as you heard tonight, we made some up, updates to our Jonesboro Youth City Government Charter. So just again, I appreciate mayor and council, this governing body for continuing to pour into our youth. Um, it is important, super important, um, to all of our scholars, uh, going back to school, whether you're Clint County Public School, a homeschool, our dear Clayton State University, um, or any university. Um, please, um, let's make sure we make our mark this year for some. It's, it's our first, it's our last first day. Um, definitely want to make sure just we don't take it for granted. So congratulations in advance and, uh, we'll see y'all soon. And happy birthday to all my Leos too.
Happy belated birthday to Councilman Alfred Dixon.
And Mayor Pro Tim Messing.
Oh, yeah, Mayor Pro Tim Messing, I thought we hadn't been together since then. Um, just a few announcements for the mayor again, thank you all so much for coming. Um, a week and a half ago, staff as well as one council member attended our, attended our nuisance abatement training. Um, so we are getting trained to follow new state law on how to deal with abandoned, blighted properties that we would consider a nuisance. So we will have to bring before council a new updated ordinance that's in align with current state law. And so we're really excited about that. We want to thank Attorney Latonya Wally for providing that training. I think all staff that attended can tell that it was, um, extremely worthwhile as well, well as council. Um, council members, if any of you all want to attend the training, we'll reschedule it for you all to attend on that one. Also want to take a point of personal privilege, our assistant, um, for the officer of the mayor, Shelby Bentley. Um, her grandmother passed this morning, so if you all would keep her in your prayers, that's why she's not here today and why we kind of stumbled on our PowerPoint today. Um, on Thursday, in partnership with Clayton County Board of Commissioners, they're having Groove on the Green. It will start at six o'clock in Lee Street Park. Um, there's one on eight fourteen, August twenty-eighth, nine eleven and nine twenty-five. Speaking of nine eleven, this will be a citywide day of service and City Hall will be closed on that day. Um, Public Works will be working, if you have trash service that day, as well as our wonderful police department. But all staff, um, will attend a day of service and we're going to be working with Habitat for Humanity, building a house. We already built our houses in Jonesboro because we can't work here, so we'll be in here recounting, that'll be our day of service. Also that evening, we'll be having one of our community pop-ups at Herf Side. Playground construction drumroll will begin next week. We'll know when we see that grass here, but our hope is that we'll get that and have that up and running. We also had our procurement kick, pick up kickoff with our consultant last week, um, and that was really beneficial and, um, staff appreciated that. On tomorrow, counsel, we'll be meeting with the develop, Templar Development for the Cheyenne Development. That is the development that is going toward Fayetteville. Um, I don't think any of you all have RSVP, but I would really like for you all to be a part of that meeting. Anybody RSVP? Okay. If you are, want RSVP, let me know. Um, I want to be my, remind you of our budget hearings. We've had budget meetings, but now it's time for our budget, I mean, I'm sorry, our milis rate hearing. They will be held at eleven AM and six PM on August eighteenth. And our last one will be on August twenty-fifth at six PM. However, if anytime you would like to speak with me in regard to milis rate or share some concerns, please just reach out directly to my office. Last week, we had our first city, um, field trip. Yay! It was kind of cool. We had, how many people was it, twenty-two? Twenty-two members of the community. So these were people that lived here, um, Andrews Chapel, um, Shiloh Baptist Church. Um, shout out to our chaplain for allowing us to use their van and transporting us there. But we went and looked at a, um, development on cottages of Von. It's a micro community, not necessarily tiny homes, it's just a micro pocket community, something that the DDA, um, is looking at partnering with the city to develop. So it was a really exciting field trip. Um, I don't think a lot of these adults have been on a field trip in a while, but they behaved themselves, so we were excited. And lastly, if anyone is interested, um, the City of Jonesboro takes on London. Um, so we missed, a few of us are going to London to support not only the home of, not under the Andrew Simpson, but also Jonesboro High School Band will be performing there on New Year's Day. So if you're interested in attending with us, we would love for more of the community to come out. We're super excited. Andrew has promised us to give us a personal tour all the way up to, um, Prince Charles. But no, so, um, but if you want more information, let us know. That's all that we have for this evening. It has been a busy month of learning for our staff, so I want to commend you all for allowing me to really pour into those areas that we need. And, um, thank you all again for participating, um, staff, and then also for the members of the community for coming. We have an open door policy, so if you have a question or concerns, you don't have to wait until it's open comment. You can reach directly out to the mayor and I would love to speak with you directly. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session. All in favor? Any opposition? We're now in executive session. Yeah, can I just go to bathroom, y'all? Can I just go to bathroom? Can I just go to bathroom? I'm going to talk to the in-home guy. I'm going to talk to the in-home guy. No, no, that's fine.
I entertain a motion to go back into regular session.
So may it.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are now in regular session. Council, is there any motions to be made?
Mayor, if I can.
Yes.
Motion to approve the settlement agreement and have discussed during the executive session for Cedric Hill, EEOC matter.
Second, no motion.
Any discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? At this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Oh, one more, I'm so sorry, I'm sorry.
Motion to approve the meeting minutes from the August 11th, 2025 executive session.
Second.
Who started doing that? Huh?
Well, maybe we'll do it, I tell you what, let's, we can do it the next, during the next session. If that's, if we still need to do it, so, you can withdraw that motion.
Okay.
Yeah, well.
Alright, now can I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? No, that's all out of order, any opposed?